We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Remember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight, yes, one excuse.
Thank you very much. Next, we're moving to administrative business. First on the agenda is Resolution 2020-43, CARES Act Funding to Provide Rent and Mortgage Relief. While Jason Rogers, Director of Community Development, please explain the need for the resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. While we were in negotiations with the identified vendor, staff was made aware of modifications to eligibility parameters and award criteria. The resolution that was previously approved by council, yes, provided a broad flexibility for most parameters and criteria. However, there was an exclusion that of an area 80% area median income cap. The identified vendor has worked with, I'll say, staff in increasing the AMI eligibility parameter above the 80% AMI that would allow for a broader distribution to Commerce City residents. It is anticipated that the distribution in which the identified vendor have proposed to city staff and are supportive of as far as from a staff perspective could serve as high as 120% of the area median income for Commerce City residents. So therefore, the resolution that is attached repeals and replaces the AMI component with language that allows for staff to establish this and other criteria in consultation with the vendor. This will still allow staff to continue navigating obviously changing dynamics due to the COVID-19 crisis while ensuring a broad distribution of relief through the community. And with that, I'll answer any questions that council may have for me.
Anyone on council have any questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, looking for a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2020-43. Mayor Pro Tem? You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Sorry, my bad. Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-43.
Councilman Madera?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 2020-43. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight, yes, one excuse.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the designation of a voting delegate for the Colorado Municipal League Conference. Mr. Sheasley, would you please explain the need?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Wednesday is the annual business meeting for the Colorado Municipal League. The annual conference was canceled, of course, this year. Every municipality can identify one person to do the vote online, which will primarily be for adopting their policy statement and the the executive board members. I don't know how this has been handled in the past. I believe they said somebody just picks it up at the annual meeting and they figure it out there. You do have a policy committee member, Mr. Madera, who could handle that. I don't believe council would need to take a position on any matters. If you just entrust one member with using best judgment, but that would be up to council. It has to be registered by midnight tonight. We found out late last week, so wanted to put that before the council to see if they wanted to appoint someone to do that.
Great. I think Mr. Madera already has a relationship with all those people and be a perfect person in order to place that vote.
I'm willing to do so.
Great. Need a motion to do that, Councilman Hearst?
A motion to appoint Councilmember Madera to the voting member of the CMO conference.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second to appoint Councilman Madera to be our voting delegate for the Colorado Municipal League Conference on Wednesday. Take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Eight, yes, one excuse.
Thank you. While we're on the same subject, I'm hoping in city attorney, if this is not allowed based on the structure of the meeting, please let me know. But would also like to make a motion that our voting delegate vote for Jessica Sandgren, who is a councilwoman out of Thornton. She is the only Adams County representative that is seeking an office with the executive committee and would like Commerce City to throw their support behind Councilwoman Sandgren. Is that permissible?
I believe that would be acceptable, yes.
Thank you very much. That's my motion. Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll second that.
Great. I have a motion in a second in order to have our vote for Commerce City go towards Councilwoman Jessica Sandgren from Thornton. Again, she's the only individual out of Adams County that is seeking appointment to the executive committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody on that. I know she'll appreciate our support as well. Next on the agenda is ratification of Christie Grant application for 120th Avenue and US 85 Project. Does anyone on council have questions for staff? I do have a question, Mr. Tinglemer. Did we get a letter from CDOT?
Yes, sir. We also got a letter from the Weld County Commissioners.
Very nice. Okay, thank you. So unfortunately, we couldn't get the additional funding, but at least we got the letter to move forward. So Councilman Hearst?
Do we mind if we do, even if it's a very brief oversight of what this is? Generalization even real quick before we move to vote?
Mr. Tinglemer, do you have the grant that you could pull up?
Yeah, just working on pulling it up right now. Just starting with a general overview as I pull it up. The grant is a Christie grant, which would basically pay the majority of that grade separation project. And sorry, distracted here as I pull it up. If I may, the reason I ask that question is just to make it clear to our residents what this is. The Christie grant is a fantastic opportunity for us. The federal government, FRA, FHWA just plus moneyed this this program, meaning that it was extended from its old program and moved forward with additional money. So they are looking for projects almost exactly like this. I've gotten a very long drawn out conversation about this in my current role. And I think I will fully be supporting this, obviously, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understand what this grant application is going for. And I don't, I'd rather mine a very high level view, just. Yeah. Can do. The project, the updated cost estimate for the project is over $90 million at this point. And so the grant request is for 62.4 million. That would be 69% of the total. So what we're looking for is basically a majority of the project to be funded out of this. There there is a an existing grant of CDOT dollars, which is about 6.3 million dollars. City of Brighton would be contributing 3 million. Adams County and Commerce City, with your approval, are committing 8 million each. And then CDOT is also contributing an additional 1 million dollars. So it has multiple funding sources. And it would be a huge project to get to be able to get that grade separation put in to make that a safer intersection and reduce the amount of traffic stoppage. I appreciate that, Roger. Last thing I have, and I think this is important that we go for the Christie grant because CDOT just won a infra grant for I-70. And so even though even though the process isn't supposed to be, you know, hey, you already got some recently. We're not going to give you anymore. It's not supposed to be like that, but I'll tell you in my experience, when they when they award as much money as they did to state of Colorado, we won't be seeing that significant of a reward again for at least another year. I agree. Christie stands for Consolidated Rail Infrastructure Safety Improvements. That's what Christie stands for.
And Roger, if you could, at your leisure, please send the grant application to everybody so they have a chance to review it. I think it'd be great for them to see the what I consider to be just a phenomenal package that was put together with some great supporting data and everything. And it truly knocked my socks off to sit there and read that grant application the other morning before I had my call with Director Lou. So please send that out to everybody so that they can see the fine work that was put together by everybody.
I can send the link. It's about 74 megabytes, so it won't be able to be actually shipped by email.
Yeah, even if it's just the the portion, the PDF portion that I received, like I said, very impressive what was put together. And I think you guys all did a great job doing that. So thank you for the hard work on everybody that was part of the team to put that together. Councilman Hearst, your hand is still up. Are you done? Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
I was just gonna make a motion to ratify the Christie grant application for the project.
Okay, Councilman Madera?
Second.
Great. Have a motion in a second to ratify the Christie grant application for the project. Just one other thing for background for everybody. The reason why we're doing this ratification initially, Commerce City was going to fund a million dollars for it. And whenever the funding from CDOT was reduced from 8 million dollars to 1 million dollars for that additional money that Deputy City Manager mentioned, the only way to meet the local match requirement is for Commerce City to kick in additional money. So we were asked last week if we would agree to that. And this is the ratification to that process so that we are good. Everybody understand? Great. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes eight to one.
I'm sorry, did what'd you say?
Passes eight to one.
Oh, eight positive and one abstain or one vacancy?
Correct. Sorry for not clarifying.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is discussion of interim city management process and city management recruitment process. Will City Attorney Sheasley please lead the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief. Given the situation with the city manager's likely resignation on July 6, assuming the city council does not have a candidate to appoint to the permanent city manager position, council will need to take two actions. The first being appointing an interim city manager that would serve pending that permanent recruitment. And then also determine the method by which they will identify that permanent replacement for the city manager. And so taking that, those two questions, in part, you would likely have an agreement with the interim regarding salary and other terms. If it's a current city employee, that person would serve in that role. And then if removed from that role, they would go back to their previously existing position. It would only be on interim basis. And so council could use the executive session tonight to determine their negotiating positions with potential appointees and have that discussion to develop those positions among themselves, among the council with an eye towards having at least the appointment on July 6. And then with the, hopefully, the agreement that evening or later. And then the second question would be just to confirm that the desire of council is to obtain an executive search firm, which is the standard process. It seems in these matters and not to rely on an internal function to conduct that process. It's a it's an intensive process to both develop the positions terms and the advertisement and to look at the scope of what the council would be looking for to fill the position. And then to reach out to extensive networks of contacts and advertise it, I assume nationally is the way council would want to approach this and then manage the applications and coordinate the process. It'll be particularly challenging due to the public health crisis, and we expect it would be a many month process. The HR department would be leading this process on your behalf, but I'm handling this this evening. It would be likely at least a six to eight month minimum process to have a new city manager in place. And I I expect likely a longer period. So I wanted to confirm during this open session that the HR department should start working on finding an executive search term and whether they should go out and identify one or issue a request for proposals on a kind of hurried basis to get a few options for council to review. And then select which one they'd want to want to proceed with and enter into a contract with. So if we take those questions in the reverse order, we don't need to vote on this. But I'd like to hear opinions. And if there's a general consensus that council would like to use a search firm and go out and issue a request or proposals for that.
Yeah, I think we should go out and find a firm. And maybe they have some that we've worked with in the past. Did we use one for PW's director?
Yep.
I think some a firm that's familiar with Commerce City. You know, so I would I would like to bring a couple of options and then let us decide.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, I agree. I would like to have us use a firm. With my experience, I don't think that they necessarily have to have, you know, need to have experience with Commerce City. I think it's a it's a bonus. But I think that we need to seek a couple of proposals on recruiting firms. So that would be my suggestion.
Yeah. Um, no, I agree. I mean, I agree with both. I think it's important to understand, you know, the the area and our needs. But at the same time, I would really be looking for someone who specializes in in like public administration positions, you know, specifically going after the best candidates possible and having some type of relationship already established within the industry of having contacts and being able to connect those dots for us. But again, I think we would we would see that with with qualified applicants. And I and I trust HR in the process by which we would be acquiring those businesses. I trust that process enough to know that we'll we'll get good candidates for we'll get good candidates to find a candidate for us. Sorry.
I'm happy to give them that direction if there's no objection and get them started on that. Not direction, that recommendation. They don't work for me. So Roger would be happy to tell them. So in the absence of objection, the other item is on the interim city manager discussion. If council would like to enter executive session for negotiation purposes for that matter or take another action, that would be appropriate now.
Is there a desire by council to have the executive session this evening? Or would you prefer to wait until July 6 after this has gone through and have the executive session at that time? Mayor Pro Tem?
I I would like to see if we can move it to another, move this executive session to another night. I just feel like it's late and I don't, I I just don't know if it's going to get drawn out, but I feel like we're all tired. We've had a long night, but just my thoughts.
Councilman Madera?
I'd at least like to get the discussion rolling and see where everyone's at and try to have our ducks in a row before. That way, we're not being reactive to the situation after the fact. So at least getting the the conversation to start it if we can. And if we don't, you know, finish anything tonight or then we can always continue that a later date.
I agree with Councilmember Madera.
Does that mean you're making a motion?
Oh. Did he make a motion?
He did not.
I can, yeah. I'll move to enter executive session. Send to CRS 24-6-402, Rounds 4, Round Z. For the purpose of determining and developing negotiated positions and instruction negotiators relative to the interim city manager agreement.
I'll second that.
Great. I have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas? Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank? Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
I believe that is seven in favor, one opposed, and one excuse.
Okay. Mr. Attorney prior to us leaving, can we adjourn this meeting? Or do I need to come back and adjourn the meeting after the executive session?
We'll come back and adjourn it after the executive session. But hopefully, given comments, it'll be a brief introductory executive session.
Very well. So everybody should have another link in their email to go to that executive session. We'll see you there in about four minutes. Very well, so everybody should have another link in their email to go to that executive session. We'll see you there uh in about four minutes. Good. We good?
I'm here and you're here, so you could adjourn. I don't know if anybody else is there.
Okay, we are out of our executive session. There being no further business to come before the city of Commerce City, we are adjourned. Have good evening, have a good week, and we'll be back next week with a joint meeting be with us and the Adams fourteen school board. Look forward to that, so have a good evening.